Or take somebody's seat. Public comment, we got it on there twice. I just noticed something, we got, oh, okay, there you go. All right. All right. Bringing this meeting back to order again, or some semblance thereof. We are to public hearings. Audrey, what do you got for us? Number nine.
First one, Justin.
Ah, Justin.
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. Justin Diner, staff attorney for the city of Benita Springs. Today, we have a resolution in front of you declaring city council's notice of intent to declare a zoning in progress to establish minimum regulations for automobile-related uses and certain other uses, including tattoo parlors on US 41 Tamiami Trail. The resolution will be published in the next available Fort Myers news press. And what this resolution does is it puts the world on notice that there are proposed zoning changes coming forward before you. It establishes a 90-day temporary hold on applications for the uses listed in this resolution. Those are automobile and tattoo parlor-related uses. Those applications will not be processed or approved unless they are located within a planned development or obtain a special exception. And, yeah, we have John Dolmer here from Community Development, who can answer any questions about the proposed regulations. We also have City Attorney Vance, who can answer any other questions regarding a zoning in progress.
Good deal, good deal, good job. Counsel, you got any questions?
Over here.
Yes?
I do. Within this 90-day process, could we receive what is and what has been done as a refresher for my mind for the Benita Beach overlay? Because I think that we need to have some consistency with what's going on. John, good. Signage, is that included in this also? And the same thing, should there be some consistency?
No, it is not right now, but it would be recommended that the council would approve or include signage within the zoning in progress.
Okay, thank you. So, could you put that on my list?
Got it, Jen.
And then, you know, as we move through this, I understand that we're looking, the goal obviously is for an attractive Route 41, but at the same time, we are a very diverse community with a lot of diverse needs and business and commercial wants and needs. So, I hope that that's all taken into consideration, because I know that for some folks, there's one topic on there, and I just have to say it. Tattoo parlors is something that some folks don't like yet. I've got them, so I'm proud of my tattoos, and I just think that's part of being a diverse community, so I'd hate to see that disappear. And also, I guess, I'm having a little hiccup with fast-food restaurants, and I understand that, you know, maybe we need to work with something, maybe limiting the drive-through part where you, I've got a problem with the definition of who is and who isn't and who makes it, because if we had this in place, we wouldn't be getting that wonderful drive-through Starbucks. So, yeah, I'm just putting my thoughts out there as we move forward, so I appreciate that, thank you.
Well, and maybe a little clarification on this. This doesn't, this is just putting people on notice that, that some of these things may happen.
Yes, this is a 90-day, putting everyone on notice for 90 days.
And it does still leave the door open for, to do it through special exception until that time.
Right.
It just lets us look at it case-by-case basis.
Right, and it'll come before you again.
Instead of by right, okay?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good, well, yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I think the issue, as much as anything, is not necessarily the type of business, but the facade that the business has, and that's, that's as important to me as anything. I don't mean to start to deliberate on this, because we're not at that point, but a lot of the people who use fast-food restaurants don't have automobiles, and as much as I hate to, hate to bring it up, you know, even though the nutrition's not there, if that's the only meal you can get by walking to a 7-Eleven or a McDonald's to get a meal, that's what's going to happen. So, we need to make sure we don't have unintentional consequences when we, when we get there.
I, I need to point out that convenience foods and beverage stores are also on the list, which is the 7-Eleven-type facility. This is just to allow us time to have buffers, to have it so that it's aesthetic. So, you see a lot of the automobile facilities, and the reason the automobile facilities are on is if somebody has an oil change, do you really want to see the cars in the front, or do you want to require the buildings to have the bay not being looked at the front, not being, you want to look at the cars?
Really, Dr. Steve, this will not impact those businesses that are currently in existence. This is basically for those applications that want to come in over the next 90 days. We would simply place them on hold and let them know that we are changing our regulations. They'd have to be compliant with those as we process it.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I just, I do want to clarify, for the record, we are looking at uses, as well as facades and architecture.
Sure, sure, yeah, absolutely. And along line of Jan there, I love chickens, so anybody who wants to have a chicken farm, it's okay. No, I'm just kidding. See there? Anyway, any other questions? Mike?
So, we're not exactly saying no to these businesses?
Right, this is just putting everyone on notice that if you want to come in with one of these businesses that are listed on the, inside of the resolution, that we're discussing zoning changes concerning those businesses, and there's a 90-day hold on processing your application.
So, if we just increase the architectural standards and said that the bays needed to be on the backside, or the tattoo parlor needs to be tasteful, they're acceptable? I, I just don't want to see us turning away any businesses, as an anti-business.
As long as they're consistent with the new zoning regulations.
But as Carl said, then again, there may be some uses that you say aren't, shouldn't be in specific areas, and you could say in different zones. You could say in this zone here, we don't want to have a lot of automotive, used car parking lots, but in this, because it's adjacent to a couple of communities, or something like that. So, you could, you could do those kind of things, so.
Right, I, I want to just point out that this ordinance, or the zoning in progress, is to implement an ordinance comparable to what we did on Benita Beach Road. We adopted a corridor or charrette to create a specialized design for that particular road segment. The uses can still continue once we have that design, and it's basically trying to encourage planned development in those areas, so that we can add conditions in zoning. When you have zoning like C-1A or C-1, those zonings were put in place in 1962, and they did not look at conditions, and the way the law reads is you're not allowed to condition conventional zoning. So, this allows, instead of somebody at a development order stage being surprised by us being like, "You can't do this," having it so that we are able to do more by planned development, or if it's a smaller parcel, instead of going through the whole planned development process, through a special exception.
And along the lines of the design regulations, let's say, oh, storage buildings that, near the river, or, just for example, that, you know, okay, well, you know, if you want to do one of those, and it is in this particular area, well, then you have to do it like this. You have to make it look like a residential whatever, so, and you can do that without preculcinant, if you want to, yeah. Yeah, go ahead.
And like Dr. Steve touched on, and I guess maybe to take the boomerang around to the other side a little bit, unintended consequences might be a very good thing here. Everybody wants what they can't have, right? What kind of a business might be attracted to this that may not have been otherwise? I mean, you know, time will tell, but I think this is fantastic.
Okay, all right, good. Any other questions? Yes.
Just, as I understand the vote, there'll be 15 uses, so we'll be adding any signage. I'm not removing tattoo parlors, because they could go by special, unless council tells me otherwise, because they can go by special exception, or if it's in a planned development, through a planned development, if there's any new tattoo parlors.
As could anything else, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Do we have a motion second on that?
No.
Uh, yes.
On the resolution?
Resolution.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter at this time, please come forward. There he is. Come on up.
I didn't realize the meeting was going to be this morning, I thought it was going to be this evening, so I just found out at about 9:30 today, so I ran up here real quick. My name is Jonathan German. I own 27761 Tamiami Trail. That's between Advance Auto Parts and the Benita lockup on the east side of 41. And I bought the vacant land, it's about a one-acre parcel, I bought it in early February, and I would like to do some sort of fast-food use there, so I just wanted to mention that, you know, or a bank use, or something like that. So, when I heard about this, this coming up, I just didn't want to be bottlenecked into, into some sort of use that wasn't, you know, I want to be able to use the property for a commercial intended use, that's all. I just want to make that point.
Thank you very much, and stay involved, man, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move forward.
Approved, moved to approve the resolution, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Audrey, you need any other direction, or you got it?
Yeah, just as amended.
Good, good. Roll call, please.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
No.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye. Okay, Audrey, you're still up. First reading and public hearing of the following ordinances.
Thank you, and all of these do take public comment. I have, the first ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Benita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Hyatt Equities LLC, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 7 Township 47 South, range 25 East, 26-5, more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for effective date. This is a first reading, the second reading will be held on May 7, 2014. It has been sent to the Board of County Commissioners by the city clerk, and it has been advertised, and it is scheduled, if city council moves it, for the second and final public hearing on May, on May 21, in this chamber, starting at 9:00 a.m. I'm sorry, May 7. May 7, starting at 5:00 p.m., I'm, 5:30.
Thank you very much, and let's go right to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll go ahead. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Want to move to second reading?
Yes.
Motion to move second reading, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Okay, item B, please.
Thank you. The next ordinance is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, extending the territorial limits of the city of Benita Springs, Florida by the annexation of unincorporated tracts of land owned by Astera Bay Marine LLC, Donovan LLC, and Sugar Mountain Development LLC for Phase 1, also known as the Astera Marina area, lying contiguous to and being in the same county as the city of Benita Springs, Lee County, Florida, located in Section 7 Township 47, South, range 25 East, 17.34, more or less acres, assignment to City Council District 1, and providing for an effective date. This is a first reading and public hearing, the second reading will be held on May 7, 2014, at 5:30 in these chambers.
Thank you. Audrey, and we'll go to public comment this time. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Ron Puer, Benita Springs. Would it be appropriate in this ordinance to put anything about the impact fees that you folks have proposed, or is this strictly having to do with the transfer of land from unincorporated to the city of Benita Springs?
Keep going, we'll answer that.
Well, for instance, I mean, it has been expressed that this, these companies would be granted certain, what some would consider extreme entitlements, if they're, to become a part of Benita Springs, such as a drastic reduction in impact fees for certain things, should they choose to build them. I think those have to do with docks, perhaps, or a building, and a 100% cut in the building of a high-rise, should they choose to do that. So, again, would that be appropriate to address in this ordinance, that, that not be done? Or again, is this ordinance having to do with the transfer of property?
All that information is contained within the ordinance.
Well, I'm, I'm asking someone here to answer the question.
Well, and this isn't time for a question and answer, this is time for your public comment, and if you'd like to ask a question, we'll answer it at the end.
If it is a part of the ordinance, that you folks reconsider passage of it at this point. Also, if someone clear, could clear up today, does the Hyatt property, item A, encompass, or do Hyatt's holdings encompass any part of the Raptor Bay Golf Course and time shares that are located in that area? So, if you could, someone could answer that question, that'd be useful, or address it. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Okay, and in answer to Ron's last question about item A, not item B, it is just the Hyatt property itself, it has nothing to do with the Raptor Bay, our time shares, correct?
That is correct. Right, it's the Hyatt Equities property, so if you look at that, it would be the square that, it's four parcels that make up the Hyatt Hotel Resort and Spa. As to this first question and impact fees, this ordinance does not confer any rights on the property, that was done through an annexation agreement. As to the issue of the hotel getting the economic development incentives, that does not relate to this particular parcel, this is Phase 1, which is the marina. So, the marina and potentially a restaurant would be what is conceived on this. The other development would be in Phase 2, and that, that's a whole different issue going forward. So, I mean, it's separate, and the two things are separate.
Bingo. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move to second reading.
We have moved to second reading, is there a second?
Second.
We have motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
And Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, on to C.
Okay, I'm just looking for paper here, thank you. And this is a first reading and public hearing of the following ordinance, it's an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, amending Benita Springs Land Development Code, Chapter 3, Development Standards, amending Section 3-262, regulating security lighting within public and private right-of-ways, amending Section 3-608 Site Design Standards, providing for conflicts of law, severability, codification, scrivener's errors, inclusion in code, and an effective date. This is a first reading, the second reading will be held on May 7, 2014, for its second and final reading. This ordinance has been reviewed by the local planning agency at their March 13, 2014 meeting, who did find it consistent with the comprehensive plan. Just so you are aware, I did get some comments from Eve Haverfield yesterday, she did find a typo that I will make a correction. She was also very happy to see sea turtle lighting regulations referenced in the document. She did have two questions, only relating to security lighting features being above 25 feet, and there is some reason for that, I presume, as well as she would make a suggestion to encourage LED lighting, because it keeps with the dark-skY efforts, as opposed to metal halide?
Halide.
Halide, lighting, sorry, because that can be very blinding, bright white, and does not guarantee safety and more security.
Okay, and can you go ahead and explain to us what the, the last change we made at the last meeting?
I, yes.
As far as the timing?
As far as the timing, the ordinance has a fixed date of compliance at January 1, 2020, as opposed to three years, I think was the original, the language that was given prior to your March 5 meeting. We had the other changes, and they're all summarized in the green sheet, just to explain. Tried to make very clear that streetlights have a statutory definition, streetlights are security lights, I wanted to tie in the state statute, which of course deals with immunity from negligence, if there's a problem with the lighting, and limits liability. So, I wanted to make sure we kept everything cohesive in that area. And as far as site design standards, we did make a minor amendment into that one statutory section, so it relates back. So, when you look at the design, if you're, if you're going for a development order and you're looking at the design standards, you want to be related back to Section 3-2, sorry, 3-262, so that you go to the right area to design.
Okay, Chris, could you go on for a minute? Part of our discussion last time revolved around your ability to enforce this, if we pass it like this, and what that was going to take. Have you had any time to think about, so far as manpower-wise and/or cost-wise, what it would take for you to do an inventory of all the lighting fixtures that this entails within the city, and then go by and, and do all that has to be done in that period of time?
Five years is a long time, we feel that we can accomplish a, kind of an early adopter to educate businesses over that five-year time period, provide educational materials and guidance. Since it's commercial, it's tied mostly to the corridor areas, so we reach out to those businesses and educate and work with them over that five-year period, as opposed to waiting till 2020 and just doing it then.
Which is when most people will wait till, right?
But we'll be able to develop the inventory over the five.
You'll be able, you'll have that much time to develop the inventory.
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions for Chris, or any other questions regarding this? What's your pleasure? Oh, we got to go to public comment, right? Thank you very much, Chris.
Yes, sir.
Anyone wishing to speak to this, please come forward. Seeing none, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Make the motion to move it to the second reading, please.
And we have motion to make the second reading, is there a second? And we have motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Okay, next.
Thank you. The final ordinance for today is an ordinance of the city of Benita Springs, Florida, amending the city of Benita Springs Comprehensive Plan as adopted by ordinance number 02-16, as amended so as to update the potable water sub-element of the infrastructure element and the capital improvement element to coordinate with the South Florida Water Management District's Lower West Coast Water Supply 2012 Plan Update, and include a 10-year water supply facilities work plan as required by Florida statutes, Section 163.3177, subsection 6C, providing for transmit to the state land planning agency, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, and providing for an effective date and for other purposes. This is the first reading, second reading will be held on May 7, 2014. The local planning agency did discuss the ordinance on April 10. Recommendations included on page 37 to delete policy 1.2.8, I think John Dolmer can go into more as to discussion there. On page 4, modify the table to make sure it reads, the future is additional future, so that people understand that's additional people, that's not that we're reducing density at Citrus Park, and adding a table. And on page 16, we found a typo in the numbers, the math worked out okay, but the numbers that were actually printed there were incorrect, it was a typo.
And John, are you okay with the? He's yelling in there. He doesn't like it either. See if he's on fire, or something. Wouldn't be good. Okay, if anybody has anything horrible to say, now's your, now's your time. Anything else horrible, not about me. They say that all the time, anyway.
Nevermind.
Yeah, give your annexation report now, girl. Oh, I can hear it in there, listen. You just can't hear it in here. Any news? Okay, well, why don't we just carry on? Everybody will think we're just having our fun. So, I was asking you something, wasn't I?
Yes, sir, you were asking.
Yeah, do you have any problem with any of these changes that they recommend?
Yes, sir, I doubt it.
Okay, any questions, counsel, before we go to public comment? Okay, thank you very much, John. This time, we'll go to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter, please come forward.
Jury masters, Benita Springs, I have a handout here for the.
Could you give it, could you go ahead and give it to the clerk, and she'll take care of that for us? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Here's a couple more for you.
Thank you, sir.
That's for all the council persons.
Okay, thank you, I'll make sure she gets them, thank you.
My comments pertain to the proposed comprehensive plan amendment to update the potable water sub-element, which assumes a population and ERC growth requiring expansion of BSU's RO water treatment plant by 2020, a cost of $25 million, with an addition of three brackish wells, a cost of $5 million. Proposed amendment objective 1.3 requires establishment of broad-based system of revenue regulation that will ensure that new development pays at least 90% of capital costs of the public infrastructure directly attributed to that new development. This means that the cost of BSU's planned expansion must be paid with impact fees, better known as ANC fees. The last review of BSU's water impact fee schedule was made in 2007, when this council adopted the fee of $2,600 per ERC unit effective September 1, 2007. It is incumbent on this council to adopt a resolution requiring BSU to review the current water ANC schedule and develop the proper ANC impact fee to cover the full cost of this RO expansion, and back to this council within 90 days after adoption of this amendment, with a new impact fee schedule for council action. In addition, the long-term RCS contract with BSU for purchase of bulk reclaimed water is discussed in this amendment. Now is the time for review and revision of the rate that RCS pays for purchase of BSU's reclaimed water, wastewater that's been discussed ad nauseam before this council. The current rate was developed decades ago, that was based on the average service charge for this item by Lee County Utilities and Collier County. At that time, there was insufficient history to know the true cost of this item, as utilities were selling this water at a reduced rate just to attract customers. BSU must now know the true cost of producing their reclaimed water for sale to RCS. What is the true cost? This council must adopt a resolution requiring BSU to review this item and develop the actual cost for producing reclaimed water for sale to RCS and other potential customers. This should be completed with 90, within 90 days from the adoption date of this amendment, with submittal of a new fee scheduled to the council for its action. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sir. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Edford Sterling again, 13100 Southampton Drive. I just want to finish up on some of the remarks that Fred Parton made, which I believe are not accurate, on some of the issues. The present BSU selling price of .34 per 1,000 gallons for reclaimed water is well below the market price, based on my investigation, Naples is selling it for .66 cents, Tampa $1.59, Sennibel Island $2.65, Fort Myers $1.50. My belief, the average is at market value of $1.60 per 1,000 gallons. And there was also no evidence to support BSU's claim that RCS spent large sums of money in public infrastructure to effectuate the reuse agreement. They say they spent millions of dollars, there's no evidence or documentation for what they claim. There is evidence that RCS installed infrastructure in public streets and right-of-ways of Benita Springs without county permission. I think the franchise to Benita Springs Utilities is an exclusive contract to provide infrastructure. And reclaimed water is the, the reclaimed water that they're selling to RCS is a property of BSU members. BSU members pay substantial costs and fees to send and process their sewage water to BSU. The selling price of this reclaimed water should be sufficient to offset the specific costs borne by the BSU members who sent the sewage over. And RCS is not a member owner, as defined in the franchise, and therefore is not entitled to services of this not-for-profit utility company, which is franchised to serve only its members. And the BSU franchise requires infrastructure pipes throughout the franchise area. To date, there is no infrastructure piping in Benita Springs, and it is noted that in the city of Naples, water piping, irrigation water piping consists of about 30 miles. Finishing up. I will send you all these remarks and email today to each one of you individually. I expect and hope that some of you would respond, and I hope that there is an investigation of BSU's operations. And I repeat, because BSU did not get permission to effect an agreement with RCS, the RCS agreement is illegal. I thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time wishing to speak in regards to this ordinance, please come forward. Anyone else this time wish to speak, uh, in regards to this ordinance, please come forward.
Ron Pure, Tag, Benita. I have a question. You don't have to answer it now, but after I leave, or before I leave the building, please. Uh, page 37, there's a reference to a Department of Economic, um, Opportunity. What is that? Tell someone, fill us in. I think it's, uh, being substituted for the Public Service Commission. Uh, a little history on, uh, impact fees. I, I second the motion by, uh, Mr. Masters, who was up here a bit earlier, on adopting some resolutions before you pass anything, uh, today with regard to D. Uh, the city, the county, BASFD, the fire district, and BSU have almost across the board, and for as many years as this place has been a city, 14, um, way behind the curve as far as impact fees are concerned. And the city at this point is, uh, giving out, uh, boku bucks, in our view, to those folks that, uh, have intentions of building in certain areas of our city. So with that in mind, I would think that it'd be appropriate to, for BSU to, uh, increase, uh, or certainly, uh, give a, more of a study than has been presented to you so far with respect to increasing the impact fees. Um, it is to the benefit of the ratepayers if they were to do so, so that it would minimize our exposure to any of the undertaking, any of the payback of the improvements that have to be made downstream. That, um, and I'd like to urge the city to, uh, forego and forget about the impact fee reductions that you guys have embraced in recent years or recent months, and get our fair share of the benefit that those folks that will be building in our city will have as becoming a part of this place. If we're selling paradise, then, uh, then believe in what you're selling and, uh, apply the appropriate fees for those people to come in here and, uh, pay for the opportunity to play in Benita Springs. That's it.
Thank you very much.
You'll think about it. Thank you.
Uh, Audrey, you want to answer just one question about the agency referred to?
Yeah, I'd like to answer more than that, if possible.
You okay?
Okay. Uh, the policy he's talking about is 1.2.8, which is the one LPA recommended to delete. First of all, um, Department of Community Affairs was renamed to Department of Economic Opportunity, and that's where that change occurred. So it has nothing to do with the Public Service Commission. But I also just want people to realize, I looked at our franchise, and in the franchise, um, it regulates water and wastewater, and it allows, it's a non-ex, uh, non-exclusive license, so it is not an exclusive license, so that was an incorrect statement, but it, um, allows, uh, for the lines to go through our right-of-ways for water, wastewater, and irrigation water. So as long as those lines, and as long as BSU plans to construct, maintain, repair, operate, and remove when necessary, when we require them to remove it, um, those lines are permitted within our, um, right-of-way. The tariff, however, only regulates water and wastewater. Now, with that being said, this is, the purpose of what we're here today is a planning document. It doesn't deal so much with money as much as making sure we have capacity for our water and our wastewater, uh, to take it away and to bring it, uh, when necessary. But I do understand why people would read it in tandem. Um, we do have all the different policies here, and if, we can have John or we can have Kim Hoskins explain all of that, but we are under a timeline, as we discussed previously, to take this to the state of Florida, to Department of Economic Opportunity, uh, with the changes, and I mentioned before, the three changes I will be making to the document.
And in other words, although we've allowed some discretion in public comment here, that's for sure, uh, the, the real issue at hand here, of course, the city's concern, is to be sure that whoever our supplier is can supply the city with water and wastewater services into the future.
That's correct.
Okay.
And while the predominant supplier is BSU, there are other suppliers within the city of Benita Springs.
Okay, good. Uh, any other public comment? Okay.
Good morning. I'm Alberto Bayer from Albaier Community Ministries. It's inevitable to make mistakes. That's what makes this journey called life such a fascinating predicament. So therefore, there have been mistakes made by BSU, not to mention, of course, by the city management, as well as government in the past. That will continue, however. I believe that one of the ways that we can accomplish the transparency that those that have come to the microphone today from the public have demanded is by putting forth a ethics and professionalism, uh, citizens committee, if you will, much like the, um, for example, Water Strategy Task Force. Benita Springs Utilities has a, a captive market, and that, um, is obviously something that is, uh, that requires additional scrutiny. I personally have been afflicted by mismanagement for that utility of which I've been a member, not only as a primary residence owner, but also as an investor, real estate-owned, and of course, as representative of my investors in my capacity as real estate broker. The discrepancies that exist in my primary residence are also shared by other properties, namely, the installation of the pipes by Rohaly Plumbing, which was contracted by BSU when the central sewer was installed, remain. When I went in front of the Benita Springs Utility Board of Directors, of which our current mayor used to be a member, as a board member, and has fiduciary responsibility of significant proportions, not to mention the deputy mayor, all AKA the doctor. Therefore, if we put the magnifying glass on that organization, people that are centers of influence in our town, two of which are currently in government, is precarious at best. This is why the kind of committee like that which I'm representing, which can only bring about additional transparency, is indeed critical, and I will continue to persevere in attempting to get you all to authorize my presentation thereof at the earliest possible convenience. I've bring the, I've brought this to your attention in several locations, and I've received no feedback whatsoever. These are the kinds of things that would be avoided should that kind of a committee So I look forward to receiving feedback, whatever feedback you want to favor me with, but at least give me some feedback. I've tried to reach the mayor directly in a few occasions, and I do not get any response. All I get is, "Your calls are unwelcome here." That is a double standard. There's a community ministry that I direct, and I believe that as mayor, you should exercise your due diligence, due meaning merited diligence, to engage constructively and with elegance, rather than with lack of manners. Many thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward. Seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure? Would you like to move forward to second reading?
Move to second reading.
Move to second reading? Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, there's a second to the motion. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Bill?
Um, I didn't know, uh, anything about Jerry Masters coming forward with this, uh, I hope you have all received a copy and had a chance to read it while we were up here in the dais. I'm of the opinion that, uh, perhaps we should do more listening, uh, as a group and individually, and just because someone comes up with a different point of view or a new idea, it should not necessarily be, uh, cast aside. And I think we have an obligation as a council to, uh, at least, at, at least to listen, which we have done, but I think some of these things are important. And in, in the memo, in the green sheet, uh, at the bottom, second paragraph and background, it talks about the Benita Springs. It will also include a discussion of reclaimed water and its contract with RCS at its next report to the city. When is that going to be? Do we, do we know?
We have it this morning.
But didn't we just, didn't we just do that?
Yep.
Oh, well, maybe I'm confused. It could be.
Yeah, we just did that. That, that was the green sheet for today. Yeah.
Oh.
We just had to.
Okay, well, I guess, okay, maybe that, okay, that makes sense to me. I, I apologize for that. Uh, but by the same token, I'll mention it now, well, could we find out when the next report's going to be?
Have they, they been doing it quarterly, or has it been?
I don't, I don't know.
It is.
Twice a year?
I think it's every, yeah, six, every six months or so.
Every six months, yeah.
Semi-annually, they said they'd do it.
Okay.
So it was October. So it'll be six months from now?
Yeah, it was October, and then they, and April.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So they'll be back in October, according to schedule.
Well, yeah, unless, unless they come forward for, they, excuse me, and, and unless, uh, unless they come forward with a tariff, and then they'll be before us, attorney tariff adjustments.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay?
All right, well, I think we should take to heart the, some of the things that are said as opposed to just casting them aside. There, it's not about individual personalities, it's about information that we should always, always, uh, listen to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second on the floor.
Actually, Mr. Ray.
Oh, I'm sorry, go right ahead.
Uh, well, I, actually, going with the, uh, water impact fee, when will we be, uh, reviewing that again?
Uh, well, the, the BSU, it's up to BSU to bring forward any proposals, and that's it, because, um, so far as us suggesting what the ANC fees should be, that's, I would think that that is BSU. It's up to BSU to bring those proposals forward. They have a body that's out there, and so that's the better place for, for the citizens to go to, is out there and demand that they do that, then they bring it to us, and we either approve it or, or not approve it.
And that's correct. In accordance with the, um, franchise, it's a, first of all, it's a three-party franchise, and the franchise works where, um, and it's BSU, Lee County Government, and City of Benita Springs. Pursuant to the franchise, if Benita, um, if Benita Springs Utilities wishes to increase their rates, they can always lower the rates below tariff, but if they desire to increase the rates, and the rates regulate water and wastewater.
Including ANC fees.
Including ANC fees, uh, then we amend the ordinance, and that takes public hearings, and they bring a, um, it's called equity rate study. I might need Lisa, uh, to go through that, and council has gone through that process several times, where they have reviewed the rates, and in accordance with the franchise, council makes the final call, not Lee County. Uh, Lee County felt that because predominantly BSU is within the city of Benita Springs, uh, we should be the ones setting the rates, and that was something the original city council requested, and Lee County was very happy to not have to do the rate setting, because that can be very difficult.
Okay.
And we've had a few that were difficult.
All right, good. Any questions? Yeah, Pete?
And you're looking at this, Audrey, right? This, uh, Mr. Masters.
Mm-hmm.
Forward. So that last paragraph there, this council must adopt a resolution requiring BSU to require, you see that there? Can you talk through that?
Um, I will. Uh, first of all, objective 1.3 that Mr. Masters talks about is found on page 37 of the, uh, changes. Um, objective 1.3 states, "Other financing policies." So this is a comprehensive plan policy of city councils, not of BSU. Establish a broad-based system of revenue regulations that ensure that new development pays at least 90% of the capital cost of the public infrastructure directly attributable to that new development. In other words, so the city is not subsidizing, um, outside of, you know, it's existing residents. As I understand it, the, the rate setting, they do an equity, so if we, if we allow something that is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan, a citizen or a group of citizens or another group could challenge, you know, uh, the city for that. This is, and let me go through comprehensive plan. This is our concurrency requirement, and as a concurrency requirement, it is our best intention to follow through. This is more important than any ordinance that we adopt, I mean, it's done by ordinance, but our comprehensive plan is the most important document, and so this is a broad-based policy setting up what our intentions are. It's up to staff, as well as BSU, to implement that policy, um, when it's a BSU affected, because again, some of this might not be a BSU issue, uh, when you're talking about that 90%. So that's basically it. As far as having resolutions and demands, it's just not timely at this point that I can see, as far as, this is Mr. Masters requesting that within 90 days, he wants to see council action, but quite frankly, you have a franchise, um, you are the holder of the streets, I mean, and that's the purpose of the franchise, is to protect your streets and allow certain utilities to use that facility in accordance with the franchise. In doing that, you regulate rates in addition to it, um, but I don't think you can just do a, here's our authority, here's our demand, unless it's consistent with the franchise.
And something I would suggest, if, 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 I'm sure if you request the information from Benita Springs Utilities to give you a breakdown of, of exactly what they estimate as, uh, percentage of capital costs that they spend and, and how they figure that out, well, I think that, I'm sure they would be glad to provide you with that information and give you somewhere to go to. I think that, uh, there's, there's probably a little bit of a debate in what could be considered public infrastructure as well, seeing that they're a not-for-profit co-op. Uh, so I, um, anyway, I think a lot of this refers to the city's infrastructure.
Right. And, and let me just point out one other thing, and I'm sure some of the people here are not going to be very happy with what I'm going to say. When I read the franchise that talks about those irrigation lines, it's BSU or BSU's designate. RCS is contracted in a private contract with BSU. So none of that is a public record document. It's all outside, no different than if a restaurant was a user of BSU's water and charged for a glass of water. You know, we don't regulate that cost, and same thing, we don't regulate the irrigation lines, subject to them being used in our right-of-way, um, you know, for the use, and BSU is responsible for everything within the right-of-way. Uh, you understand, or, okay?
Yeah, and, and I think, I think that, uh, counsel, if you're concerned about, as, as Mr. Masters is, about being sure that the ANC fees are, are enough coverage and stuff like that, I think that's something that you can ask for more information on, you can, you, I'm willing to do that. So far as us making any demands of that kind, I'm not, I'm not sure that this comprehensive plan amendment is the vehicle, but don't think so. Anyway, any other questions, comments? And, uh, okay? We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
No.
Councilwoman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longkart?
No.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion carries. Uh, do you have anything else under ordinances there?
No, sir.
Audrey? All right, uh, we are sailing along to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, council members, first off, we have, uh, presented the financial report, um, in the green sheet, and stand by for any questions you might have.
Questions? Nope.
Moving on to item B. Um, this is to approve a proposal of a fifth amendment to the city Benita Springs, uh, agreement with CH2M Hill with regards to the operation of our community development department. Um, basically, uh, this, this amendment does three things. Uh, number one, it provides for a new, uh, engineering position, actually, an engineer in training, if you will, to assist, uh, the current engineer, Stuart Smith, with reviews. We've already talked about, uh, buildings increasing, the volumes increasing, and, um, we are now, we've already handled some of that on the inspector's side in terms of adjusting, uh, personnel in order to make sure that our levels of service are appropriate. We are now having, um, concerns on the review side about getting things, uh, back to customers in a, on a timely, in a timely fashion. So number one, it creates that new position of engineer in training. Uh, number two- Number two, they propose to actually promote somebody from a current position into that position, and then backfill the person's position, who's going to be the new engineer in training. And then third, actually took a look at how Stuart Smith, from what funding sources Stuart Smith's position, as well as the engineer in training, what funding sources they would be paid from. And as always, we are looking to reduce the pressure and the burden on the general fund. And so we were able to look at the duties that Stuart has, as well as the new position would have, and basically, we're going to be funding this position fifty percent from general fund, and fifty percent from fees. All right? And that's a much greater, greater proportion getting shifted to fees, so we're actually reducing the burden on the general fund. The net impact annually to the general fund for this requested change in the contract is about fourteen hundred dollars. About fifty-five thousand dollars will be added to being paid for out of fees, so the customers are actually paying for that work. This is only a six-month change, because we're doing the annual, we'll be doing the annual contract closer to the October timeframe, so this is only six months. So those amounts would actually be cut in half, pretty close to cut in half. We are recommending, again, because of service issues, we are recommending approval of this. We think it's good for the general fund, we think it's good for our customers.
Okay. Council, you have any, you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, Bill?
What will the new, the new position, what will be the annual compensation to that person?
The compensation amounts are generally not something that we have discussed as part of the contract. It, we provided the information in terms of what the impact would be on, on the budget, however, those individual salaries are not part of the public record.
Because it's a private company?
Yes, sir.
But we're going to pay, the city is going to pay for the private company's creation of a new position? Is that what you're telling me?
Yes, sir.
And I, the reason why I asked the question, it is here in the paragraph on page three at the top. I came up with some certain numbers, but I obviously, but you just said, but so we're going, so when we, when we renew our contract, again, with CM Three-Hill, and that, when the next time comes up, that means there'll be an added cost of substantial amount of dollars for that new position. Might be. Plus, you're going to backfill the other, you're going to hire somebody, they're going to hire somebody else to take the position?
The net, yes. So the net increases one position.
Okay.
It is the engineer in training position, to help Stuart do reviews, okay? And the amounts that you're seeing there, the fourteen hundred dollars to the general fund, and fifty-five thousand dollars out of fees, that is the net impact annually to the budget, okay? So, and again, for the next six months, it's half of that.
Actually, that is for the six months.
That was not my understanding.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben.
All right, Mike?
Now, this is based on current workload. If the workload goes down, can we get rid of this position?
Yes. Well, it's, as with all of our positions, we are at the will of demand. Right now, I do not see the slightest possibility of this slowing down for the near future. However, at some point in the future, if there is not a place to place this, then we simply move resources around, and it does not become the financial responsibility of the city.
When John says he moves resources around, he will, may keep that person employed by CH Two-Mill, but at a different facility, so it wouldn't be under our contract anymore.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Yep. Okay, what's your pleasure, counsel? Is there a motion to prove?
I'll make.
We have a motion to prove?
I'll second.
You'll second it? Any other discussion?
I just want flexibility, so I will be making some Scrivener error corrections. It's the Seventh Amendment, and I'll just be reflecting that throughout the document.
Got it.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Councilman Slacta.
Aye.
Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Councilman Simmons.
Aye.
Councilman Gibson.
Aye.
Councilman Longcart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
All right, you probably have something very special for us to talk about now, don't you?
Well, actually, yes, and the next item is that Commissioner Keiker's going to come visit. That's the next thing I want to talk about. So. This is going to be, no, there's no cake jumping, that I'm aware of. Lee County Commissioner Larry Keiker will be spending Wednesday, May fourteenth, here at City Hall, to visit with constituents, from nine AM to three PM, here upstairs, here in City Hall. This will be advertised in the local newspaper, as well as on BTV and our website, but we just kind of wanted to make the formal announcement that he will be here, and he welcomes your appointments and your visiting with him, to let, let him know your concerns about issues that are important to all the residents. So I just want to make that announcement. The last thing I have under city manager's report is a very serious matter, it has to do with the annexation, the annexations in the former referendum area, as well as the incorporation bill that's going through the state legislature. I will tell the council that I wish I did not have to make this report today. It is very unfortunate that we have been placed in the position that we've been placed. And what I'd like to do, then, is I'm going to have some things up on the screen from time to time here. And I am going to move up to this microphone here, so I can use a pointer. Thank you, council member, I appreciate that, with the lights. I have placed before you, and we provided in a, in a radish sheet last, last night, a memo from me dated April the fifteenth. I want to thank publicly the city attorney for her assistance in drafting this memo. And what I want to do, I don't plan to read through this memo, but I do want to give a pretty clear chronology of what's going on right now. And you will see why in a few minutes. As everyone will recall, in December of 2013, there was a brief, and I mean brief, like three or four minutes, if that, meeting between myself, the mayor, and Mr. Bert Saunders, representative of the ECL, to enter into a verbal agreement that the City of Benita Springs would not object to the waiver of the two-mile buffer in the incorporation of the village of Astero, as long as those who chose to be in the City of Benita Springs could do so by entering into agreements, annex, voluntary annexation agreements, prior to April first, 2014. We also agreed that because we would be causing changes to the proposed boundary in Astero, that we would pay for the ECL's engineering firm to adjust those boundaries. We felt that that was a fair agreement. It was made, that agreement was made public that day to the local delegation, and embraced by the local delegation. So I'm, fast forward to March thirty-first, the day before our deadline, the city did submit all of the required documents, as well as new, you know, a legal, new legal description, as well as all of the annexation agreements, to State Representative Ray Rodriguez and representatives of the ECL, so that map preparation could commence immediately. In discussions with the ECL's representative, Bert Saunders, that day, as well as a few days into that week, it was agreed that the city should not prepare its own map, but rather coordinate with Johnson Engineering, who the ECL hired to do the maps, coordinate with Johnson Engineering, so that we could jointly submit a map, that was agreed to by the city and the ECL. We also offered to meet with the ECL, but that meeting never happened. Now, while that was all going on, back on March thirty-first, back in Tallahassee, there was a map that was attached to the incorporation bill for the village of Astero. And that map, created by the staff at the House level, basically was, not basically, it is the map you see in front of you right now, we have labeled this map one, it's on the screen, and what you see is that in pink is the proposed boundary of Astero, which goes all the way down to the city's current northern boundary, with the exception of what we call additional gray area on the west end, which takes into account not only the properties that are, were brought in, or going to be brought into the city officially, with regards to the Hyatt Hotel, the Weeks Fish Camp, and the fifty-five acres from WCI, but also required by the staff at the House was additional gray area that would encompass Eldorado Acres, which, up until this point, was going to be an enclave, which the state legislature did not want to create. So they created additional gray area there, or area that will stay in unincorporated Lee County, in order to prevent the, the enclave of Eldorado Acres. The city looked at this particular part of the map, and actually was in agreement with it. We think that this is appropriate for that, that west end. So J-Suite of Community Development had an opportunity to talk with Johnson Engineering a little bit about our thoughts about the bound, the new boundaries of the City of Benita Springs, given the annexation agreements that we had received. Now, unfortunately, out of the seventy or seventy-five residential annexation agreements that we received, there's about sixteen of them that we were not able to, to use. And that is because they did not meet the criteria, the state statute criteria, of being contiguous, compact, and not creating an enclave. So there are sixteen property owners out there in the former referendum area, that we're not going to be able to bring into the City of Benita Springs. We're really sorry about that. I will tell you, staff worked as hard as we could to get everybody in that we could. So it was our belief, still middle of that week, and this would have been April first or second, third, in that area, that we were going to be working with Johnson Engineering cooperatively to come up with a map, that would be jointly submitted by the city and ECL. Unfortunately, only one or two very brief conversations took place between Community Development and Johnson Engineering, and at that point, silence felled upon, fell upon the process. And we did not know what was going on, we were not getting phone calls returned by Johnson Engineering. And on April the eighth, we learned, contrary to the agreement that had been made, that to work cooperatively with the ECL, that the ECL had actually submitted a map to the state, that not only excluded many of the residential properties that were, had in annexation agreements with the City of Benita Springs, but also included a number of properties, go to the next one, included a number of properties into the city, that had not even submitted voluntary annexation agreements, in fact, included some properties that were adamantly opposed to being in Benita Springs. That was a difficult thing. This was done without, these submissions were done without our knowledge, without our participation, and I believe personally, it breached the agreement with the city. Two levels, number one was the agreement, number one, to try to include all of the properties that had annexation agreements in, that qualified by state statute. And then I think the second breach occurred with the agreement to work together on a map, and the map gets submitted without the city's knowledge. It is unfortunate that that happened, and again, we were placed in this difficult position. The map you see in front of you now is a map that was submitted by the ECL on April the eighth, again, without our participation, and if the map were actually up there, we would be able to show you. Okay, thanks. I'm messing with you, Diane. Let me see if I can press this. Okay. So you'll see down here that the gray area that was adopted by a committee of the House on March thirty-first, that the ECL brought pink down as far as they could, all right? And all they did to try to avoid some type of enclave, was to place a little bit of gray area between the Hyatt Hotel and Eldorado Acres. We were never sure what that was supposed to accomplish, other than to pick up additional property for the City of Astero. But more importantly than that is this area right here, this is forty-one, by the way, this area right here, and Diane, if you will, we'll get a close-up of that area, and this, this will show you graphically about the situation I described, about what they were attempting to do, which is, our map showed areas going way up into here, all, in fact, all the way to Coconut Road, of people who had come in with annexation agreements, and we could make the connection from here, all the way down to the municipal line. All right? You'll see that in a minute. So what the Astero plan was, let's draw a nice smooth line around neighborhoods, and there is some understanding why that would have been proffered, but the problem is, there was at least probably eleven properties in this area alone, that had not asked to be in Benita Springs. In fact, some of them were adamantly opposed to being in Benita Springs. And the question was, well, what happens to them? Well, it wasn't answered, because these areas were simply going to be the areas that were not included in Astero. What we did with the rest of them was going to be up to the City of Benita Springs, again, placing us in a difficult position. Okay, so Diane, if you'll move forward. So because on April the eighth, a map was created and submitted by Astero without our knowledge, Representative Rodriguez, rightly so, actually called and said, hey, do you guys have a map? We'd like to see what Benita thinks. So we kind of sighed, and we said, we'll, we'll put one together. And so we actually put one together in about a day and a half. It was extremely difficult. I give a lot of credit to Audrey, to J-Suite, the people that worked on this, actually well into the night. In order to create this map, and this is of the entire northern boundary, new boundary proposed by the City of Benita Springs, you're picking up, again, you're picking up, this is the area we've already picked up, this is the Hyatt, this is Weeks, and this is the fifty-five acres for WCI, and it actually goes out and connects to our property out to the west there. This is the area, Diane, this is the area that I want to focus on, and then we'll get to the next map. So what we did was, we submitted this map, as well as the one coming up, and this is simply a blow-up of the residential area. And we submitted this to Ray Rodriguez at one twenty-nine PM on April ninth, two days before the next committee stop for the incorporation bill. It was our hope and our expectation that this particular map would be the map for Benita Springs, and that the Astero boundary would be appropriately adjusted. So it's our belief, after a lot of work, that the commercial property here, that the individuals who wanted to come in to the city, not the entire neighborhoods, okay, but just the ones that wanted to come into the City of Benita Springs, who also met the statutory requirements, that we could argue, certainly, that these were compact, contiguous, and did not create enclaves. So you can assume that if these properties were brought into the City of Benita Springs, that the rest, everything else that you see that's now gray here, would be eventually pink, all right, would be the village of Astero. Unfortunately, we learned later that day, April ninth, from Representative Rodriguez, that the staff at the House level had indicated to him that they were not going to be, he was not going to be able to use a map, changing the map in the bill, coming up at the committee on Friday, on Friday the eleventh, because the staff wouldn't have had time to analyze it. We were very concerned about that, because we knew this was the last committee stop before this bill went to the floor. And so what we had was a situation where the first map you saw, map number one, with Astero coming all the way down to our northern boundary, with the exception of the gray area out in the west, was going to be the map that was going to be in front of the committee on Friday, April the eleventh. That map was considered. That map was considered, um, to Representative Rodriguez's credit, as well as to Bert Saunders' credit, the representative for the ECCL. Um, they, those two were in agreement with testimony provided by Carol Green, our lobbyist, to that committee saying, the map that they were looking at was going to be amended on the floor of the House. The committee was told that. All right? And Bert Saunders agreed, and Representative Rodriguez agreed. That, that bill passed through that committee, um, on April 11th. And again, we expected that this map was eventually going to become a part of this bill, but now on the House floor. This week, April the 14th, we found out from Representative Rodriguez, that because of timing issues, that the map, map number one, is also the one going to the House floor. And the Bonita map will not be presented on the House floor, and there will be no request for an amendment for that. This is one of those things, times where I think we've been kind of led down the primrose path. At each stop, we have asked questions, we have pressed for better answers, we've pressed for assurances. And what we do is, we find ourselves unfortunately in the position that, um, our map is not going to be presented before the House. Which means that, once this gets to the House floor, and if it is not amended, by the way, we believe it can be amended, all right? But right now, if it's not amended, map number one will be the map, that will be the boundaries of the new village of Astero. Um, and, and that concerns us greatly. Now, Representative Rodriguez has indicated that, well, what we'll do is, we'll pass this bill, and Astero will go to a vote in November. And if they pass, then of course, uh, the, the city will come into, to being, they probably won't even have their first meeting until March, I mean, that's what their charter indicates. But Ray has indicated that he is willing to, uh, sponsor a local bill in, uh, past December, once the, the next legislative delegation meeting happens. And that he will sponsor a bill in the legislative session for 2015, a year from now, to basically fix all of this, and take these properties back out of Astero. I will tell you that the staff has looked at this, we have agonized over this, um, we feel it is un, it is unfair. And given all these circumstances, there's several things that we think the council could consider. Number one, ask that the Village of Astero Charter, uh, be amended in this bill, uh, basically to say that Astero's boundaries will encompass, encompass its legal description as explained in map number one. Okay? Absent properties that are annexed in voluntarily to the city of Bonita Springs. That unfortunately is not likely to happen, because, uh, Representative Rodriguez, um, is, uh, in, interested in having this bill pass through the House without any more amendments. Number two, we could basically ask that the proposed bill be removed from this year's agenda. Uh, that's the nice way of saying, kill the bill. Um, that would obviously have, uh, tremendous impact in the area here, um, but, um, what's fair is fair sometimes. And, um, we, again, we share our concerns about, uh, the ECCL placing us in this position. Um, also originally, the city agreed to incur the cost of preparation, uh, of the map. Um, and I think since we did not get to participate, since a map was sent that had little to do with what our proposal would be, um, that I would say we don't pay, uh, reimburse the ECCL or, uh, Johnson Engineering for any of that work. Fourth, obviously, we need to notify the affected owners, um, they're going to learn about it obviously through this meeting, but also we'll be communicating with them formally, especially those who, um, are the 16 who we're not going to be able to, to bring in, under any circumstances. Um, and then we could also look to basically continue forward with annexing additional properties. My thought is, and I, I'm not a lawyer, sometimes I just play one, uh, I mean, my thought is, is that once the agreement was breached, we could actually go back and say, you know what? We've got a problem with the two-mile buffer. I mean, that's the agreement we made before. I'm not suggesting we do that, but the bottom line is, is we could still continue with annexations, and I'm talking even about properties that had not been approached yet. Okay? And there are some people, additional people, because I ran out of time, who might be interested in being in the city of Bonita Springs. Now what are our recommendations after all of this? First off, we believe we have always, through this entire process, and I think we can hold our heads high, we have always through this process, we've tried to do the right thing. We have tried to meet our obligations under this agreement. We wanted to do the right thing. We wanted to be the nice guys. All right? Um, right now, I'd say, that, that hasn't worked for us, unfortunately. And that's horrible to have to say. So I would think in order to live up to our side of the agreement, uh, recommendation number one would be to go ahead and continue to bring in these properties. Now I'm not saying new ones, I'm just suggesting at this point, that the ones we have annexation agreements for, that meet the state criteria, that we bring forward ordinances, and you bring them into the city. And as part of that, once that occurs, and they're in the city, that we notify the appropriate county officials, the appraiser, and the supervisor of elections, and say, make the changes, they're in the city of Bonita Springs. Second, authorize staff to work with the local legislative delegation to provide for, uh, a local bill for the 2015 legislative session, which affirms the actions that we're recommending under recommendation number one. And then number three, we would authorize staff not to reimburse the ECCL, uh, or, uh, Johnson Engineering for preparation of a boundary map that had little to do, uh, with our annexation agreements. I think we need to do the right thing. I feel like unfortunately, we've been taken advantage of at several term, turns during this process. But I would submit to council that if it be your pleasure, we have an obligation, uh, to bring those property owners into the city, who have exercised their property rights and their right to choose under which governance they want to operate and live their lives. And they have chosen Bonita Springs. Um, I stand ready for any questions you might have. Um, obviously, this is a difficult subject, but, um, I trust council will make the right decision here. Again, stand by for any questions.
Carl, well done. Um, Steve?
Yes, Carl, are we talking roughly about minus the 16, about 54, 55 properties?
Yes, sir. Residentially.
Residentially, right.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and, um, I, um, for the proposal on all three aspects, so.
Okay, all right. Any other comment? Yes?
I mean Audrey, if it goes without saying, but I think, you know, for the public's benefit and everybody's benefit, what would be good, um, these are property owners that are exercising their rights, correct? They want to be part of Bonita Springs. No issues there, right? Legal or otherwise?
There are legal issues, and there may be some additional legal consequences to the actions in going forward with the voluntary annexations consistent with the state statute. I have retained outside council, uh, Rutzel and Andrus to assist me, uh, should we need to file a declaratory action, or take any other actions necessary to perfect, that these lands should be included within the city of Bonita Springs' boundaries.
Okay. Um, you know, I, I know Representative Rodriguez, I'd consider him a good friend. I mean, I helped him get where he is, several of us in this room had, did. Um, I think it's also good for the public to know he's an Astero resident. You know, this is, you know, I say this lightly, but you know, you think of the cowboys and Indians out west grabbing land, I mean, I think it's interesting, from a point of view, that we're even disputing boundaries. But, but guess what? We are. So, so here we are. This has been done legally, it's been done legislatively, and now it's, you know, it's a home turf war, and Representative Rodriguez is from Astero, and, uh, doing what he feels is right. However, we are from Bonita Springs, and we're elected from Bonita Springs, so we're here to do what I believe is right for the citizens of Bonita Springs, the businesses that want to be part of Bonita Springs. So I absolutely say, full steam ahead, I don't believe, let's wait till next session to offer, you know, let's make a deal with the next session. With all due respect to Representative Ray Rodriguez, he may not be there next session, there may be some different state senators, different governor, different, the whole, the whole map changes. So I say, full steam ahead now.
By that you mean go for bill removal?
The three, the three, the three that he just mentioned here.
Recommendations.
Recommendations he just ended. Uh, Janet, go ahead, and I'll come back.
It's truly very unfortunate that we have to be in this position, and that this has happened. And I, I feel for those folks that live, and that made their, their wishes known that they want to be part, and then the ones that didn't, and they're being put into the city. You know, that's truly unfair to those folks too. Um, I think it's come to the point where we've been forced to stop playing nice, and we have to stand up for our residents and for what's right. And I definitely agree that we shouldn't pay for a map that we had no input in. So I am absolutely in favor of Carl's recommendations, and we move forward.
Okay. Mike, did you have something, or are you okay? Good? Phil?
Uh, I, I agree with, with Janet and Peter. Um, my only question is, and knowing what I've been told, um, the breakdown between Johnson Engineering and Community Development, what, maybe this is not the appropriate place to discuss it, but I wonder about that, how we didn't, those two entities didn't come together to make sure that it was coordinated between both, both the city and Astero.
Um, our information is, is that the ECCL told them to stop.
Yeah, but they were, they were working with, we were paying part of the fee.
ECCL was their client. We were going to reimburse the ECCL or pay Johnson directly.
We have a written document that says?
But we, no, it's a verbal agreement. We don't have a written document. We had a couple of conversations with the gentleman who was working at Johnson Engineering on this, um, but, but that was it. The communication stopped after a day or two. And a meeting never took place, either between the surveyors or the ECCL and us, even though we offered.
I'll stop. Thank you.
But Johnson Engineering did have the information that we supplied, as the ECCL had the information. There was an initial map that Johnson had been carving out and working on, and they were told not to do that one.
They had all the information that we supplied, absolutely. They had all the information they needed, and it is our understanding that, um, Johnson was told to stop.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Uh, Steve, go ahead.
Um, I'm going to try to be professional and respectful, um, but it's going to be difficult. Um, history of this thing, I mentioned the ECCL in February a year ago, that if an incorporation came about, the people who lived in that part of Pelican Landing were not going to have an opportunity to vote to be in Bonita Springs, even though they had Bonita Springs addresses, wanted to be in Bonita Springs, and they'll have an opportunity to vote. No problem. It's a great idea. Except when I brought it forward in a referendum, then it was, no, no, we don't want to do that. So, you know, we've taken a pretty high road on this thing all along. I'm proud of this council, I'm proud of the city staff. Uh, we've been transparent, we've been upfront, and we've been honest, I think. And you can twist it any way you want to, but that's, that's what it's been. There's always been, uh, an indication that there were people working behind the scenes to throw obstacles up, and they have, uh, every step of the way. Uh, who they are is also fairly obvious to people. But when a member of Bonita Springs' citizenry stepped up to that podium and said, we're working behind the scenes with the state to stop this, that crossed the line. I don't, I don't have, I, I don't have all the answers to this, but I can tell you, there have been violations of ethics, and there have been violation of what I would call at least protocol, if not law, in the way this has been done. The people who live in those areas have been berated, belittled, threatened, because they want to be in the city of Bonita Springs. We were promised that they'd have that opportunity, we gave them the promise that they could have that opportunity, and we cannot let them go off on their own and not be protected. And that's where we are on this thing. If we don't stand up for these people, we're not standing up for democracy. And that's where I am on this thing. I support Carl. I'd go farther, but I know that's probably the wrong thing to do, but I support what Carl wants to do.
Yeah, I'm of, uh, the same mind here. This has been quite the adventure, uh, to say the least. Uh, from the very beginning, we worked really hard to carve out an agreement, whenever this all started to transpire, and, uh, our goal was to carve out agreement that was fair to all concerned. A lot of you are, uh, familiar with that particular phrase. You know, fair to all concerned. And that's what we did. We kept making proposals with the legislature and trying to make that happen. And so we did come up with this, this agreement. We thought it was fair. You know what? And it was suggested, more or less, by one of the legislators that, you know what, if people want to be in Bonita Springs, why don't you just have them annex in? Okay, good idea. So that, that's where it kind of came from. And so we followed up on that. And afterwards, I've got to tell you, this staff, and all of, all of us involved have worked very hard to, again, after that agreement was reached, to fulfill our side of the agreement, to be true to the agreement, in every step of the way, everything that we did, and to keep checking back, and to keep saying, this is what's happening now, this is what's happening now. Are we, you know, we still good? Are we still good? Yes, yes, yes. Right down to it. And I don't know how much, how much more we could have done. If there, if there was a failure to do something, it wasn't on this end, because that's all we were obligated to do, was get the signatures at that particular point in time, provide them, okay, here it is. So then, there, there should have been a meeting of the minds that occurred, where it should have occurred, to carve that out. It wasn't our failure to do that. We were ready and able and willing and had all the information ready to go. That's not this council's fault. I think, as, as Carl does, and as the rest of you do too, we owe it to those people in there. And you know what? It would be really easy for us to say, you know what, yeah, the, that's fine, let's just get it going, and let's, let's wait and see what happens in 2015. If it weren't for those individuals, I mean, you talk about a courageous act. I mean, I mean, the, the effort that the legislature put into leaving Eldorado Acres out, they went to great lengths to, I mean, carve out large sections of, of land to be sure that they were left alone. What about these people? What, what about them? And I, and I know that, that this was something that, this was, you know, uh, the, our representative is, uh, you know, he's tried to do something, oh, well, we'll do this in 2015. But I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't feel that, that we should come off the course of doing exactly what we said we were going to do. Not just from the legislation standpoint, not just with our deal with ECCL, but with these people. And, uh, so I think that I agree with all of you. And I would support a motion to, to follow through with the, uh, the three suggestions from, from Carl. Carl, go ahead.
Just one more thing real quick, and I neglected to do this, but, um, Carol Green, our lobbyist, is sitting in the audience right now, and of course, if you have any questions of her, uh, please don't hesitate to, to ask her. She's been a, uh, great partner with us, uh, as, as we continue to deal with this issue at the state level.
Okay.
Yeah, no, just before we do move forward here, would you mind coming up for a minute? I was actually gonna do that before Carl mentioned that. We, we had a nice sidebar here.
Sure.
If, and I guess maybe to frame the question, um, you represent us, and everybody knows everybody personally that's involved, and.
Sure.
It's a tough situation for all of us. I mean, it really is, because it's, it's legal, it's political, it's personal, it's, you know, it's everything. It's emotional, all wrapped into one. This session versus next session, could I get your thoughts on that? Just, I want to be as impartial as I can be here, and don't mean to put you in a tough spot. But see, I don't, I also don't believe in, let's run out this clock on this legislative session, delay, delay, people will, people will calm down a little bit, some people will forget, and go into next session. So, I don't know if I framed that very well, but.
Um, I, I don't believe that, that you're going to find that capital strategies forget. Uh, it's been a rough, a rough, uh, week or so. Uh, I can tell you with all honesty, um, that I concur with everything that's been presented, obviously, by your manager. We've had, um, many, many, many conversations over the last few weeks, even. over the last few weeks even. And I will tell you that as of the Wednesday before Friday, a week ago today, Bert Saunders and Representative Rodriguez and I all sat together with this map, and it was affirmed by all three of us that this is the map. And Representative Rodriguez is the one who told me that. I mean, he said, "This is the map." And, and Mr. Saunders was in the room too, and we all agreed, and we all agreed about the go-forward. What happened between then and Friday afternoon, there was some pushback that happened on behalf of some of the staff, I believe, with some of the changes. I can tell you. Yeah, the, actually the staff, and, yeah, not this staff, the staff in Tallahassee, thank you, in, in the House staff, in particular, in Tallahassee. So I know that, I represent, I keep, I keep wanting to call him Senator Saunders. Bert Saunders and I were both at the meeting as per what Carl testified, and we both testified in regards to the fact that changes needed to be made. The, that was all taken down. It was all on record. So we have a record. We have a template of everything that's happened. So that doesn't go away, just because it's six months from now or eight months from now. That, none of that goes away. You know, I think that we were challenged with, on Monday, when this news came, that we were challenged Monday, we, now meaning you and your city manager and your staff, with the old phrase, "How do you take lemons and make lemonade?" And you have to figure out, you're, with this challenge, what your plan needs to be. From my, my political position and my lobbyist's position and my relationship with Benita Springs, which is very, a very long one. I understand I was maybe in some of those videos too. I noticed that they didn't show me fifteen years ago. But, but I've been with Benita Springs a long time, and, and I can assure you that the plans that have laid forward make perfect sense to me in what needs to happen. So I know that you have legal representation here that is, is par excellence. You have a lot of good advice that's been given to you. You know, God willing, I'm still with you in, in December to the point of where, you know, again, I, I haven't forgotten anything that's happened. Will our delegation change? It has potential to do a little bit of a change. It's not going to be a drastic change. I had an opportunity to speak with the chairman of the delegation, Chairman Caldwell, just because I felt it was important that he and I have a conversation, which we had yesterday. It was a very, a very good dialogue. I will tell you back and forth about, about what's happened, and, you know, and everybody's, he's feeling quite concerned about what's happened. But we have to go forward, and, and I hear exactly what you say, and I, and I feel it in my heart too, about what you're talking about with, these are individuals. This isn't just green on a map. These are individuals, and, and I feel really bad about what's happened to them too. And I'm not sure I am answering your question, but, but, you know, I think that you have to have a, a good plan to go forward, and, and I would tell you that I concur with, for what that's worth. I concur with what your staff has pulled together. Seems like to me that that's a, a good go-forward plan, and that we will just ride herd on this a little bit longer than we'd planned on.
Thank you.
And I might also add that all of this goes away if they simply amend the bill on the floor of the House to reflect that map. All of it goes away. So...
Yeah, that's, I think that that's the first, the most frustrating part of the, the whole thing, that it was a very simple thing to do, which was, which was our offer. It's the same original offer.
Mm-hmm.
If you do this, we'll do that, and we're gonna, we're gonna be standing right next to you, Estero, saying, "Yeah, give them their opportunity to incorporate. We're right with them. Right with them." I mean, and the same thing with this. They, they put this in there, we're right with them, there's no hassles, nothing, I mean, goes on the rocket docket, goes right through, no, no problems. But, but it's like, that was too complicated for them.
Well, and, and I, and in all fairness, if I could just explain that just a little bit, because I think it's important for everyone to understand, the way that the rules play in the House of Representatives, and the Senate for that matter, is we have, we have a short window of time, a short window of opportunity. Rules state when committees stop. The committees have stopped in the House as of last Friday. There's no opportunity to have another committee meeting. The, the rule stand that the Senate stops on Tuesday, not that that matters one way or the other in this regard. So that being the rule, that means that there will be no more committees called to be able to do that. When you bring something like this to, a local bill to the floor, the, the House staff will tell you that things, and House leadership will tell you, things get very squishy when you start trying to amend local bills. And if, in fact, there ends up being a food fight over the local bill, it, it could potentially kill the local bill. We also know that there are folks who feel very strongly that the sentiment is that they don't want to create any more cities, because they feel cities is a drain on the, the state coffers. So consequently, there's all of that. And we did have this discussion with Representative Rodriguez on Monday too, and he felt that the chances of passing this bill, if it were to be amended, were, were very slim. And that was his opinion as a current seated House member.
All right. Steve?
Before I make a motion, I, I'm of the mind, since we've been, since the agreement's been violated anyway, to pull the two-mile agreement and, and to pull the support of incorporation of Estero. I don't think that's prudent, and I won't do that. But I will make a motion that we accept the approach that the city manager proposed, and the city council seems to be of one mind to do, and I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, and that includes all, all three of his suggestions there.
Yep.
Yeah, a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Yes, Mike?
Could we go further, you know, later on, if we wanted to, and, and pull the two-mile?
Your next meeting will be after the legislative session's concluded.
To go further, you mean so far as the annexations, is that what you're talking about? Or what are you talking about?
No, what Councilman McIntosh just brought up.
Oh, so far as that? I don't know.
That's not in my motion.
Okay. I guess anything's possible in the future, you know. Anyway, a motion and a second. I just want to make it, I want to make it clear for the record. Every time we've ran into something that surprised us and may have made us angry, we stopped for 12 to 24 hours.
Right.
We thought about it. We got back together. We said, "Look, we're, we're not going to let our passions overrule our common sense." That's what we did in this instance too. I mean, there was, there was a lot of gnashing in teeth, and, and Ashley was throwing things at me and everything else.
I made her leave.
She's made her leave. Yeah, we made her leave.
I wasn't gonna let her.
I mean, she talked about it like a sailor, but anyway. Anyway, no, but there's all kinds of, but, but this, this is a decision that we've made, a dispassionate decision, regardless what anybody thinks. There's, there's no meanness in this. This is just us saying, "Look, what was our intent? What was the purpose? What was the goal? What was the agreed-upon result? So let's carry on." That's all this is. That's all this is. And, and anything that doesn't get done on somebody else's end, that's, that's up to them. It's up to them to take care of. If their goal was to get an incorporation through, good. God bless them. Let them, let them go. So yes.
Counsel, I just want to make it clear that as we proceed forward with the voluntary annexations, if that's your motion, that I will probably come back in the future to look at possibly having a declaratory action done between, you know, completion of that annexation, because you have two competing sections of the Florida Constitution in Article Eight, Section Two.
Okay.
All right, whatever.
Good. Whatever it takes.
Roll call.
And whatever that means. Okay? I get it. I get it. We've been talking about it. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call. Oh, oh, wait a minute. We were supposed to, at the beginning of this, were we supposed to?
Yes. Pursuant to our administrative code on meetings, normally when, we don't talk about things that are not on the agenda. We did put this on the agenda. So counsel first needs to do two motions before this motion. One, a motion to say, "Was there cause to have this discussion?" And then you could do the motion.
I'll make a motion. We'll hit.
Okay. Could you withdraw the motion?
Yes.
Need to draw the motion and make that motion?
I do make the motion.
And I'll second it.
You understand the motion, the motion to be that it, there is an emergency.
Yes, unauthorized.
Okay?
Yes.
Okay. And counsel will vote on that motion first. Roll call.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Okay. And if you'd like to make the motion again?
I will make the motion that we accept the three proposals to deal with this issue that were brought forward by the city manager.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Slakta?
Aye.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Okay. You have anything real fun for us to do?
I'm finished, sir. Thank you.
Finished. I'm afraid you're not. Okay. Here we go. Mayor and Councilmember I supports. Hey, do we have, did that ever get put on the screen there, what we wanted to show?
Yes.
Oh. I'm gonna show you all something.
You want me to turn it down?
Oh, yeah.
It's something to be really proud of. This is Forbes Magazine.
Drumroll.
I want you to think, every once in a while, you get the feeling as a council member, after people start yelling and screaming about all kinds of stuff, you know, and every once in a while, I'm tempted to think, "My God, we just live in hell, don't we? We just, it's just a horrible place we live. We do things wrong. Everything's bad." Guess what? Forbes Magazine thinks that Benita Springs is one of the top 25 places to retire, to follow your bliss.
No.
The place in southwest Florida. Not Tampa, not Miami, not West Palm Beach, not Key West, not any other city I can name. Benita Springs. So be loud, be proud.
Absolutely.
It's not so shabby here, right? So when you get those complaints, point them to this. Forbes Magazine, I think that's a pretty good source.
Yep.
Pretty good? Okay?
Very good.
Just wanted to bring that up. Okay. And now we are Mayor and Councilmember I in the discussion determining city council committee assignments, and you all have a piece of paper in front of you. And you also, I don't know, we didn't, we don't have the old one, do we?
It's attached.
It's in the packet.
It's in a packet. Okay. And if, if you've all got any idea, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start with Councilman McIntosh. Councilman McIntosh, would you, and I'm just gonna start to see what we all would like to have. Would you like to keep the ones you have now?
I'd like to keep the ones I have. Yes, please.
And why don't you, why don't you go down the list for us, so that we can mark them on the new one?
That'd be great. Well, wait a minute.
Can you go top? Well, wait a minute.
ECCL?
Oh, yeah. I think you marked that one out.
Well, let's wait and see if they reform. But anyway, I'll stay, I'll stay on there as the representative.
Okay.
The MPO, please.
Okay.
And, sorry, I had it marked. I locked it at home.
Utilities, BSU, and FPL.
Yeah, BSU and FPL liaison.
That's it? That's what you had? Oh, your, um, technology?
Fort Myers Beach, Fort Myers Beach and the Technology Group.
Yeah, Technology. Where, oh, Technology, where are they at?
They're not on there.
Oh, Technology.
Okay, that's one thing I don't do.
I'll put that at the bottom. Tech at the bottom. Okay.
And your sustainability group.
Yeah. Sustainability's not on there either.
Sustainability, well, I had technology.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, great.
Good. Councilman Longheart?
Oh, I am on the YMCA board.
Okay. All right, good.
That makes a difference to you.
All right. Councilman Longheart?
Same.
The same?
Yeah.
And could, could you go down?
Oh, sure.
Would you mind going down the list for me?
Budget and finance, contracting contract purchases, revenues and expenditures, leases, Comcast and TECO.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. And, uh, Councilwoman Martin?
Yep. Presently serving on the Historical Preservation Board, the Art and Public Places Board, the Tree Preservation Committee, and the newly formed Bicycle Pedestrian Facility. I'm also on the YMCA board.
I'd yield to Councilwoman Martin on the Y City Board.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Good.
I'd like to keep all of those. And my groups have also said they'd like me to stay, which is very sweet.
Oh, geez. Oh, my goodness.
All right. Take it easy. Councilwoman Simmons? Uh, the, the ones that you've been on there, what are the, what are the current ones you're on?
MPO.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Okay. All right. Good. MPO. And what else you got?
Yeah. MPO and Florida League of Cities.
Florida League of Cities. Okay. Good, good, good.
And then looking at, let's see here, beaches and shores. Janet, was that you? I apologize.
So what was that, what was the previous ones? You had, you had some previous ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Agency on Bay Management.
There you go.
Which, which is fine. Charlotte Harbor, which is fine, if need be. And I'd like beaches and shores, bays and rivers.
Okay. That, that doesn't, nobody else has on there, right? Okay, beaches, shores, bays and rivers.
It was Councilman Ferrera, but I didn't.
Oh, I got you. You, you good?
I'm good.
Okay. Good. Good. They're good? Okay. All right. Councilwoman Slakta?
Yeah, I'd like to keep my four, the Fire Control District Liaison, Human Services Advisory Council, Lee County Sheriff's Office Liaison, and Veterans Advisory Committee.
You did a nice job with the Bets too, by the way.
All right.
Thank you. Great job with the Bets.
Oh, Mike, is there anything on there that strikes your fancy there, so far as in, Councilwoman Simmons had the Regional Planning Council, I think she had, I don't, I don't know if, and, and, oh, the one I can speak to, the Crew Land and Water Trust one, that's actually just one spot. They actually made an extra spot for me because they wanted me to be chairman, so they put me on there. So there's only one position open for that. So that's filled by me as chairman right now on the crew, the crew board. So Mike, do you see, do you see anything on there that you may want to take a hold of, that you're interested in? And we don't have to do this now, if you want to go ahead and take some time and, and ask, if you want to talk to staff and talk to them about time constraints and when they meet and that kind of thing like that.
I would like to get more information on that.
Why don't you do that? And, because it's really important, because real quick, you can find yourself on two things that meet at the same time, and you're like, "What the heck? I can't, can't make that." That happens a lot. So if, if you want to wait on, Carl, can you, can you meet with Mike and get him that information? Okay. All right. Good. That'll be all right, Mike? All right, good. Appreciate it. Okay. And counsel, we don't need any affirmation of that, other than, we're, we're good. You got that list?
Mm-hmm.
Ready? Okay? Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah, Horizon Council, Crew Land and Water Trust, the MPO, if you guys will still have me. Then this Board of County Commissioners, the Collier County. Oh, yeah, you had Chamber of Commerce too, right? Do you want to keep the Chamber of Commerce run?
I thought that might be good for Mike, but I don't know.
Well, Mike, why don't you, why don't you consider it?
Yeah.
Okay? I think that'd be good. And then I had the Benita Springs Economic Development one. Okay? Good? All good? And then, why don't you bring it back on our next meeting, and then you'll, you'll work with Mike. Yeah, we'll fill in the blanks. If there's anything left over, we'll, we'll have to deal with it then. Okay? All right. Okay, now let's just go to Councilmember Iams. And Bill, I'm gonna start with you.
Oh, I, I've said enough today. Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. Steve?
I've done plenty.
Fine. Mike?
Good.
Good? Janet?
Okay. I condensed it down to just two wonderful things that are going on. District Two news, and that is, I just want to commend the Gardens condominium complex on East Terry and Matheson. They created a couple of years ago a gopher tortoise preserve, which I thought was pretty awesome that they went ahead and did that. And they have gone ahead now and started a contract with Stan Tech and specifically Craig Schmidtler, who is the gopher tortoise wrangler, as I like to call him. And they've done a wonderful job of cleaning up their facility and making sure that it's the best for the gopher tortoises. So I just want to thank them and commend them for doing that, because that's pretty awesome, that they're doing that. And then I just love to show this beautiful flyer. You've heard us talking and talking and talking about the Benita Springs Film Fest. It's the first one, and it's pretty awesome. And the Benita Nature Place is the place that these films will all be taking place at. So it's wonderful, and I also want to give a huge shout out to, to the Prado Stadium 12, our very own Benita Springs Theater, because they are going to do the presentation and the award ceremony for the films that make the cut to the end. So it's pretty awesome. And the one thing that makes this film festival different than any other is there is no age requirement. Anyone can enter. So it's awesome. And there is a, a pretty sweet cash prize too. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Pete, what you got?
Uh, two things here. May 6th, I'd like to actually commend Ben Hershinson. Ben and I have been talking about this for a while. We're organizing a town hall meeting here at 6 o'clock. That is confirmed, right, Carl? Just, May 6th, at 6. Carl, Ben, Ben will be the moderator, and it's certainly for District Four, but... um, Ben, Ben will be the moderator and it's certainly for District Four, but quite frankly, I'm happy to open it up citywide if anybody'd like to be here. May sixth, at six o'clock for a town hall meeting to talk through some issues, uh, whatever might be on anybody's mind. And then just like to remind everybody that, uh, Tuesday, uh, is the election, so get out and vote.
All right, thank you very much. Steve, what do you got?
Well, this is a very precious and holy time of the years. Uh, our Jewish friends are celebrating Passover, our Christian friends are celebrating Easter, and this is a time that we all need to be with our family and, and reflect. Um, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And this time, public comment. Anyone wishing to speak this time, please come forward.
Hi, Deborah McLean, publisher of The Banana Peel. I have three items to discuss, so I'll talk fast. With regard to the Baraco report, I believe The Banana Peel via Wayne Daltry's submission from his desk, um, and all the errors and omissions and half-truths have been exposed, and I respectfully request you ask for our money back. Um, secondly, um, Tom Leonardo, counselor with the City of Fort Myers, has been in conversation with me. The City of Fort Myers is very small geographically, however, it has sixty-three thousand people. It has a mileage rate, now please listen to the decimal point, of eight point two three. I talked to Larry Hart at Lee County, and this is because they have too many nonprofits. So the burden falls on the taxpayers, the sixty percent, and the forty percent don't pay taxes. We must be extraordinarily vigilant that we do not tip that scale. So that brings me to the flyover. When the flyover fight was lost there, they, the flyover destroyed businesses within a quarter-mile radius of each flyover. The shopping centers are empty. They are no longer paying taxes. The City of Fort Myers may face bankruptcy, and that's what the flyover does for neighborhoods, and that's what nonprofits do to cities. So I think it's very important that you weigh these things very strongly when people come before you and say they want homeless shelters and soup kitchens. And we had to fight so hard to stop that. And now we have documented proof that businesses fail permanently in its call, not a dead corridor, but a dead zone, a quarter of a mile around any overpass. And the last issue, which I'm surprised is gonna come out of my mouth, is, uh, not the BSU cranks and the one crazy, but Jerry Masters made a plausible presentation that should be investigated. I'm sure you're shocked to hear me say that. But he made the only intelligent presentation that must be investigated by the city with regard to Benita Springs Utilities, whom I love dearly. I also want to remember the cranks and the crazy, that the city is forty-two thousand, forty-two square miles and growing, we hope. However, Benita Springs Utilities is sixty square miles and therefore cannot be governed by the city. Please remember that. Uh, but we do have an issue, and Mr. Masters brought it forth in the correct manner with no mess, with no emotion, and he is not associated with that other group. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Before I give you my happy news, I want to commend all of you, every single one of you sitting up there. And I'm talking about the discussion, the lengthy discussion about this disappointment with the annexation, and that includes our manager here and everyone on staff. You can all hold your heads up high, and everybody in this city should be very, very proud of you. You did everything right, everything above board, only to be stabbed in the back, and it's so unfortunate. And I'm proud of the decision you made, move forward. And now, I have to expand on what Janet said. The film festival, you notice, uh, Benita Springs Nature Place? Well, that's near and dear to my heart. And I just want you to know that the committee is all former friends. Column doesn't need a last name. Uh, let's see if I get them in alphabetical order. Trish Leonard, Janet, Gary Price, Dallas Ravor, uh, Steve and Cindy Trumball, Susan Watson, and Janine Poloskis. Janine is in Fort Myers Beach, and she is the one organizing the Fort Myers Beach Film Festival, so she's a welcome, welcome addition. And as Janet said, the exciting thing is no age limit, no entry fee, fifteen minutes, G-rated on any subject, but it's going to be filmed at our beautiful Benita Nature Place. And we hope that this will just expand in the future. And I have to give credit to our own Antonio Correia. This is, it was his idea, and he's put so much time and effort in it, and that's why those of us who are on the committee want it to help him. So please, it's on the website, it's on the Parks and Recs website. It's just, it's wonderful, and we're so excited. And for those of you who may not be aware out there, um, the gates at Nature Place are now open from morning until night every single day, so that people can enjoy the trails, Column's trail, there's benches there, it's easy to navigate, it's absolutely beautiful. You go see the butterflies and just enjoy it. So the House, of course, is kept locked unless there is a representative there, but enjoy that beautiful gopher tortoise. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you very much. Anyone else this time, please come forward?
Alberto Bayer, Community Ministries. As I stated before, mistakes are inevitable, but what's important is then when they are, admission of the mistakes takes place and then amends follows. I'm reading a petition here dated four sixteen fourteen. Petition for city management and, underlined, city council to request from BSU the permit documentation relative to the installation of the sewer pipes by their subcontractor, Roaheli and Sons Plumbing, at three six one six Macomb Lane and three six four six Macomb Lane. One, please email status of this petition to communityministries@albayer.com. Two, please enclose a copy of this written request for your above-mentioned status update email. Benita Springs did make a mistake with regards to the property abutting mine, which is located at thirty-six forty-six Macomb Lane. Basically, when I requested in front of the Board of Directors at BSU that they favor me with the corresponding documentation, they did not provide me that. However, Attorney Don Johnson sent me a letter stating that I was to continue to follow up in writing going forward. The permitting documentation requested remains pending delivery. That documentation is public record, therefore, the city management, as well as each and every one of you, can indeed request it, which is why I'm asking you to request it on my behalf, and that of the investor that was planning on purchasing the property at the time that I requested the subject documentation. It turns out that about six months ago, the new buyer of that property, which was not my investor, so I know, I cannot gain from his occupancy or his proprietorship as a manager of the subject property, because about six months ago, the installation of the pipes took place by Roaheli Plumbing. Pipes that should have been installed five years ago, plus or minus, and Benita Springs Utilities had been charging the monthly sewer disposal fee for all that time, despite the fact that the House was on septic. You hear me?
I hear you. We hear you every time.
And nothing has been done to spearhead this situation in a proper fashion and to facilitate transparency. All we're looking for is that. We want transparency. Once we document accordingly, we can submit to Forbes Magazine whoever it is that did that report, which I'm gonna research, what it has been like for this retiree to live in this city. Instead of getting the report of reference without any citizen's complaint or affidavit for willingness to pay charges, to press charges, I was arrested for stealing, uh, maybe twenty-dollar refrigerator, the one that used to be my garage refrigerator, which I had lent to a tenant, and ended up in the slammer.
Mr. Bayer?
Hundred and four days.
Your time is up again.
Formation of character.
Thank you very much, sir, for your comments. And, uh, that's it. Anyone else at this time likes to make a comment? Come, please come forward. Seeing none, thank you, everyone. Uh, what do you got? Approval of minutes? Would you like to prove the minutes?
Approved.
Have a motion, we have a second, uh, several, several seconds and thirds. Roll call, please.
Mayor Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Simmons?
Aye.
Councilman Gibson?
Aye.
Councilman Longcard?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilman Slakda?
Aye.
All right, meeting adjourned.
Yes. Wrong one.